The Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of February 25th will now come to order. The process this evening will be to call for items on the agenda. When we get to the public hearing, the process will be for the commission to hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative. Then we will open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. And then before closing the public hearing, both staff, the applicant, and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond and provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed, and then we will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. We'll start with general orders this evening, and we will hear from staff.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Josh Brown. I'm the project manager for Development Services. This is a final plat for Parkview Estates, Section 10, Phase 1. Here's an area map showing the location of the area to be subdivided, highlighted with the magenta polygons. A little bit of background on this plat. The Parkview Estates Section 10 preliminary plat was approved by the Planning Commission on the 11th of January in 2022, and has been since granted two 12-month extensions. The preliminary plat does have 37 residential lots. The plat was then granted an extension of 12 months by the Planning Commission on the 9th of January of 2024, and then again, most recently, on the 7th of January of this year. This plat before you deny, this final plat before you deny for Phase 1 is just for 12 lots, and the improvements for this Phase 1 have been recently deemed by city staff to be substantially complete. This is the approved preliminary plat, or preliminary plat with all 37 lots. And here is the Section 10, Phase 1, final plat with the 12 lots. 10 of them are on the west side of North Rogers Drive, and then two of them kind of to the east and the south, pretty much at the corner of North Rogers Drive and Marie So since this is a general orders, no public hearing, do you have any questions for staff?
Any questions from the commissioners?
Yes, and I don't think anyone's here whom can address this, but maybe it could be, my question could be responded to in an email. I know there were concerns that were brought forward by neighbors when the preliminary plat was initially brought forward as an agenda item regarding drainage. And a lot of those concerns were driven by the 2019 rains. Okay? I walked the area, and I understood their concerns. Now, I understand it's not under the purview of the Planning Commission to approve or disapprove a plat based on drainage. That's all engineering-based. But my question is, were those concerns ever addressed?
There would have been a drainage study approved by staff.
And that was done prior to the preliminary plat approval or post-preliminary plat?
So that, it would have been a preliminary drainage study, and then they'll have to do a final.
Right.
Yeah. And so preliminarily, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Chair would entertain a motion to approve the final plat as submitted.
I'd make a motion to approve the final plat as submitted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. We'll now move to the public hearing section of the agenda. The first item is a short-term rental, STSR 0194, and we shall hear from staff.
Okay. As mentioned, this is a short-term rental for 5313 West Country Club Drive. Here is an area map of the property, showing its frontage on Country Club Drive, and it is located between Westwood Lane and Fairwood Drive. The owner is here to speak on this item. Do you guys have any questions for staff?
No, we do not. Thank you. So at this time, we'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to come forward and provide a little bit more information.
Good afternoon. My name is Garrett Baker. I live at 801 Oak Ridge Drive, which is about 10 houses down from the subject property. I'm still our native. I grew up here, graduated high school here. One thing that's unique about this particular Airbnb is, as I said before, I live 10 houses down from it. We, this, this property was in complete disarray. We saw this, my wife and I saw this as an opportunity for us to clean up the neighborhood. We've used this for friends and family primarily, but a secondary source of income for it is, the Airbnb is what we'd like for it to be. If I can share, I don't know if I can share these pictures that I printed off. I've read, can I?
Yeah, you can hand them here to our clerk.
So these are before pictures, and then these are after pictures.
I present that to the commission. When I read the objection letters, in fact, I've met with most of the complainants. I've shared my contact information. There's a resounding theme in their objection letters, which is property values. This is not the first Airbnb in the Country Club neighborhood. There are several. This, I think, to my knowledge, is the third. But if you look at the before and afters, you can clearly see the renovations done to the property, and therefore, the increase to its property value, but also, you know, rising tides raise all boats. So, you know, this is, this was a blight of the neighborhood, and we came in, we spent about a couple of months, and did a complete renovation of the inside-outside. So that's one. The second concern that I hear in the objection letters is safety. Now, I would say, like I said, I live in the neighborhood, 10 houses down. I have three school-aged, secondary-school-aged children. None of the complainants have any children. So who is more incentivized, I would ask, for the community and neighborhood that I live in to be safe, other than me? So, and tangible ways that I do that is when we have somebody staying there. I drive back and forth past the property. If we're going to the grocery store, we go the long way and drive by the property if someone's staying there, and coming back. So safety is, of course, my utmost concern, having three small children in the neighborhood who are unsupervised, riding bikes and scooters and golf carts and everything else that the children do. So those are my comments. Like I said, there were some small, I think, minor complaints about trash cans, trash in the yards. I totally get those complaints. I've shared my contact information. All of these complainants know who I am. I'm all around the neighborhood. I have a distinct golf cart. They know where I live. They know where to find me. And I've shared my personal cellphone number with them. So at any point in time, if there's trash, or perhaps I left the trash cans out, of course, I'm more than willing to comply and make sure that those things are cleaned up. That's all the comments I've had. If the commission has questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions from the commissioners?
What sort of policies are you going to be operating out of your Airbnb?
To be frank, we're new at the Airbnb thing, so we don't have it all figured out. This is, like I said, this Airbnb is sort of like our secondary purpose of the house. But for now, we have like a two-night minimum. We have, my wife handles all the cleaning. We also have a cleaning lady, if she's out of town, to do the cleaning. I think I answered, does that answer your question, Ms. Williams?
Do you have any policies regarding parties, gatherings, renting to locals?
Renting to locals, there's no rule. I'm, I didn't say no parties, but I, certainly if there's a party, I'm going to be upset with that and put a stop to it. I'm open to adding that to our, to our policy, for sure.
About how many guests are you expecting to have?
It sleeps 12 right now.
And you have sufficient parking?
Yes. And in fact, if you, if you look at the pictures, you'll notice that on the, it's sort of, it's a very big driveway, and there's also a third row on the right-hand side. So there's ample parking, and I would think would minimize on-street parking.
Would you be, would you be comfortable adding a no-on-street parking if you think you could get six or more vehicles in the drive?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I forgot to mention, the occupancy on this is very, very low, mainly by design. We want the flexibility to offer it to friends and family when they're in town. So we've, the price point's pretty high for the house. We might be running, you know, 10% of the month occupancy, maybe? So it's a very low occupancy rental house. And, sorry, one last thing. I think there was something in a complaint about me operating as Airbnb before this hearing. I do acknowledge that. I, in good faith, I didn't, again, I'm not an Airbnb guy, so as soon as we got it going, we realized that, filed the appropriate paperwork and documentation. So thus far, we've probably had maybe five guests in the past two and a half, three months that we've been operating.
I think that's the only question I really had, is, you know, who had been staying in it prior to the application? So I think you've addressed the question that I had going in.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, no questions so much, but we do get a lot of these that come before us, and so the reason that we ask the questions, and we have no authority really to say what you can or can't put in, and I don't think, we can ask you about things, but the reason we ask about the local rentals is because we found that typically, or data shows that if someone is renting it, and they're from a certain radius, there is, the likelihood of them renting that for a party purposes is higher.
Okay.
So it's better for you if you don't do that.
Yeah. And certainly, I'm open to that, Mr. Prather. I mean, if that's a, I didn't, I didn't even think about that until you just mentioned it. But certainly, we're open to the no-parties, the no-street parking, and then the, you know?
The two-night minimum's helpful, too.
Mm-hmm.
And then specific quiet hours are also helpful.
I see.
A certain timeframe, you know, after 10 or whatever.
Okay.
Potentially, sometimes a minimum age, 25 and up, or something sometimes also helps cut down on some of that, maybe, local party use.
Yeah. I'm open to all these things. I just want the commission to know, I live in the neighborhood. I am very, very much vested in the safety, the property values, and the overall, let's call it aura, of the neighborhood.
Any other questions? Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So at this time, we'd open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item to come forward. Are you in favor?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor first? Seeing no one, I'll ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak in opposition, so ma'am, please come forward.
My name is Lorna Stein.
Yeah, if you could just get a little closer to the microphone, and can you, does that work? Perfect.
My name is Lorna Stein. I live at 1215 Westwood. My property backs this home, and I've lived there since 1986. So I've seen a lot of things change, you know, in the neighborhood, and right now, we're getting in a lot of new, young families. And I am semi-retired, so I do sit in my living room and watch the traffic going by in the street. And I'm not talking about street traffic. I'm talking about children traffic. And we have women with baby carriages, about three a day in good weather. We have children ages five, six on one side, seven on the other of this property. I, myself, in my good days, have rollerbladed down that street. It has a slight angle, which young children would not recognize until they were on it and couldn't stop. I know of a death that occurred on that corner. A man in his middle years, very healthy, a professor at OSU, killed someone right there. There are no sidewalks. We have dog walkers. We have maybe five, six dog walkers every day. We have women with baby carriages. They're all in the street because there is no sidewalk, and I believe in my letter to the group, I stated that this truly is the most dangerous street and section of the street in all of Country Club. Besides the slight incline and the fact that children would not have the wherewithal to stop, as I, when I first learned to rollerblade, was unable to stop when I turned from Country Club onto Oak Ridge. And I was an adult, and we have an adult learning to rollerblade right now with his children. We also have golf carts all the time. We have children practicing to drive in golf carts. We have golf carts stopped in the middle of the street, not because they should, but because they do, and everybody knows about it, and waits, and is patient, and goes around. But the children in the evening do drive around. I think it's extremely dangerous on that particular block. Now, I know Mr. Baker says that they have young children, but their children are down at the extreme cul-de-sac on Oak Ridge, and really don't come up to this area. And it does not guarantee, if you change the zoning, that that area will stay in a local person's hands. And I did ask the Country Club Board to consider this issue, but he is a golfer, and fortunately, I'm willing to stand up here because I'm 78, even though I'm a member of the Country Club. Because I can't be blackballed. I'm too old, and I don't golf. I find this area so dangerous. I cannot begin to explain it to you, and I have attempted to convey to other people who aren't aware of this, because either they've never rollerbladed like I have, or they've don't, are not aware of this death that occurred, because the road slightly juts to the west, right there, and there is a glaring sun that comes from the setting sun. You are momentarily blinded. The people that would be renting would not be aware of any of these things, not a one of them. And it would, I feel that anybody who is aware of this takes some culpability if something happens to one of our children or adults on this street. I feel very, very strongly about this.
Thank you, ma'am. We've got a timer for each chapter, but we appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this item?
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. I'm Tina Fugate.
And I'm Kent Deball.
And we live directly across the street from this house. And yes, it was in disarray. The owner had passed away, and, and it was fixed up. No one ever approached us. It was evidently bought to be an Airbnb, and was immediately rented when they finished. Even after he'd applied for the licensure, Mr. Baker had applied, he still rented it, knowing he didn't have a license. He never approached us and never introduced himself, and finally, two weeks ago?
In January 31st, or somewhere near there.
Yeah, January 31st. He pulled up on our driveway, never got out of his truck, and gave my husband his phone number, so. So he hasn't approached us. We have had six cars parked in front of our house, and if you park in front of our driveway, we can't get out. I mean, you know, even on the other side, it's very difficult to get out. So it does, it is a four-bedroom house, and he's renting it to 12 people. It has, and you can get on Airbnb site. It has a pool table in the living room and bunk beds, along with two beds in every other room. So your concern for it being a party house, I think, is a very real possibility. We have that same concern. We've already had issues with burning rubber out in front of our house at 9:30 at night, and revving of engines. And we've had problems with the trash cans in front of our mailboxes. There's several houses that the mailboxes are on that side. We won't get our mail if we have, if we have that. So those are real concerns. As to his concern about us not having children, I take care of a two-year-old grandchild. So that's what I retired to do. So yes, we do have children, a lot younger than his, of course.
And right next door to the, to the east in the Carpenter House, there's a family in there with two young children.
And they're always out, playing in the street. So we have definite concerns. We have been in a situation years ago where we lived in the heart of Stillwater, and, and had an older couple die, and it become a rent house, and we dealt with those problems. And it was a nightmare. The parties, the...
People urinating in the yard.
Yard, and things like that. So we're very keenly aware of the situation. And we didn't buy in Country Club, you know, to live next to a motel, and basically, that's what that is, is a motel. It's rented for a few days. You don't know who's there, and then they leave. So I think the days of me leaving my front door unlocked are over now, because we never know who's across the street. So there's been unleashed dogs over there from, from someone that's renting. I mean, all those things, all those concerns are coming to fruition. And Mr. Baker may be a fine man, I don't know. He lives way down from us. You don't, there's no way, you could never see his house from us. So he doesn't live in the area. He lives down around the corner, on a different street altogether. Do you want to add anything?
Other than the last person spoke, said, right at that intersection of Fairway Drive and, and Country Club, West Country Club, people drive very fast through there, especially if you don't know your way. If you haven't been there very often, it seems like it's kind of a fast place, so I am worried about that, on top of the rest of it, so.
Finally, I guess my main concern is the complaint process, or when we do have complaints for this. I've been online, and it looks like...
Is there a more clear path than the?
To complain if there's...
The flow chart.
I can address that. You can, you can call at the city clerk's office, or you can also report to code enforcement or the police department.
Okay.
Because the flow chart is a bit complex.
Yeah. If it's a noise issue, police department, if they're not mowing, code enforcement, those are some examples.
Okay.
Or any, any complaint you have that you need to, city clerk can direct you as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, let me, let me ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Okay. I haven't seen anyone. Ma'am, you've had a, you had quite an opportunity.
They mentioned something that reminded me of children's buses.
That was, that was in your letter. Thank you. Okay. So at this time, we've listened to everyone in favor and against. We would have the opportunity for the applicant to come forward and answer some of the questions, or maybe address concerns that have been brought up.
I wasn't aware I would have an opportunity to come back, so I did not take detailed notes, so I'm addressing this by memory. I, you know, trash cans was an issue, you know? I know when my neighbor's trash cans are left out, I grab it, and I put it to the side of their house. I would be hopeful that if they choose not to do that, they all have my personal cellphone. All three complaint letters that you have, I've sent an email to them. They have my cellphone number. They can text, they can call. I see Mr. Deball walking his dogs all the time. He can wave me down, so I'm accessible for those complaints. And truthfully, I want to be a good neighbor. And so to the extent that that house is causing problems, I want to know about it. I want to take care of the neighborhood. I want to make sure that there's not trash everywhere, and I'm, I'm not leaving everything out. You know, I can't be, I can't be the sole, I can't be the sole owner of traffic patterns in the neighborhood. I think that, you know, for, for people to drive erratic is irrespective of the Airbnb being there or not. I don't know if you get, the last time this commission has seen a FedEx or UPS truck zooming through their neighborhoods, but those are very dangerous. You know, I just don't see the issue with the traffic patterns that they do, and how that relates to the Airbnb. I respect their desire to have a neighborhood that, that they, they want to live in, and feel safe, and the things are clean, and I will make a conscientious, conscientious effort to make it so.
With that, we can...
Staff can provide alternatives?
Yeah. Close the public hearing and ask staff to provide alternatives.
Your alternatives for this are to approve the, approve the application, defer for additional discussion, or deny the application.
Thank you.
for one year, correct?
I believe so. Or if ownership changes, they have to reapply as well. I, I think there is a renewal process, but it doesn't come back to Planning Commission for approval, it's a staff review.
And if there's issues with the property?
They could come back at any time to the Planning Commission to, for hearing to revoke.
Okay.
I think I, you know, I do acknowledge and hear the objections from, from the neighbors, and I don't want to short-change those. But at the same time, a lot of them are not unique to, some are, but most are not unique to anyone living at that location. So, you know, there's, you can read different articles about whether or not a long-term or a short-term rental is more or less favorable to a property value, so, you know, you can argue either side of that. But I do feel like, you know, as I was listening to the, to the list of concerns, the best answer would be to bulldoze the house. So I thought, well, that's, you know, as a property owner, you have certain rights, So that's kind of where I've landed, is, is, you know, that there, there are concerns, they're legitimate, I think, to some degree, and, you know, we let the process play out, and if they're, if they have concerns that they raised during the year, there'll be an opportunity at a year, or even, you know, during the, the next year, if the... If the offenses are serious enough, that those can be addressed at that point. So I think that's kind of how it typically goes.
Yeah. None of the concerns are new concerns. These are concerns that are typically brought up with any of the Airbnbs that are brought before us. And we've more or less kind of developed our process of what we like to hear from the property owners and how they're going to respect the neighborhood and what type of policies they're going to apply. And it sounds like Mr. Garrett is following that as well. So to me, this doesn't fall outside of the norm for what we have been approving.
See it that way as well.
So I would motion to approve the specific -- or the short-term rental as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is map amendment, MA 25-01. We shall hear from staff first.
All right. As stated, this is a map amendment at 814 through 820 and 822 through 824 North Lincoln Street. The request is to rezone from two-family residential to two-family and multifamily residential. Also included is 1102 through 1104 West Tyler Avenue to rezone from two-family and two-family and multifamily to two-family and multifamily residential. I hope I can clarify that for you here. All right. Here is the area map showing the location of the subject area, the project area. As you can see, it does have frontages on Lincoln and then turns into Tyler. Here's an aerial view. The Oklahoma State University residential halls are directly to the west. Obricht Stadium is nearby, across Washington Street to the east. This is a street view. On the left is the North Lincoln Street properties, and on the right are the Tyler Avenue properties. Here's a zoning map. So the southern -- the two most southern properties are both zoned RT right now, currently. The applicants wish to rezone those two RTM. So the big lot on top, that's the Tyler Avenue addresses. Half of it is currently zoned RTM already. The other half is RT. The applicants wish to rezone everything to RTM, which is two-family and multifamily residential. Also located in the area is University to the west, large lots, single-family residential to the north. And RT does continue as you move on further down Tyler Avenue. This is the future land use map. This was adopted with our current comprehensive plan and is used to predict future land uses. The comprehensive plan in this area calls for low-density residential uses. The applicant's engineer is here to speak on the item. Do you -- does anybody have any questions for staff?
No questions. Thank you. So we give the applicant's representative an opportunity to come forward.
Hello. Aaron Ferguson with Bancroft Design at 923 South Lowry. So again, we're just requesting to rezone everything to RTM, which fits in with the surrounding zoning. There's RTM on the south and to the east. And as of right now, my understanding is the applicant does not have any specific plans, but they intend to sell the property, and they want to have it all rezoned consistently for that purpose.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item. Seeing no one, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and ask staff to present findings and alternatives.
Your findings are that the Land Development Code allows for rezoning of land via map amendments. RTM zoning is located in the vicinity, and the comprehensive plan calls for low-density residential uses in this area. Your alternatives tonight are to accept the findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented, or you can find that the map amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and recommend that the City Council disapprove the map amendment, or you can find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Thank you. Anyone entertaining a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. We'll now move to the next item. And the next item is a text amendment, and we will hear from staff.
Yes. Good evening. David Vare, Development Services Director, here to present a text amendment. Text amendment for Chapter 23, the Land Development Code, Article 16, subdivision preparation and requirements, Division 2, major subdivisions, Section 23-2327, contents of the final plat. I just want to speak generally before I get into this specific text amendment, that we are going to start bringing text amendments for this chapter. Obviously, the other chapters, those go straight to City Council. But we're expecting our code diagnostic soon from our comprehensive planner. And so as we start to look at our Land Development Code, we're going to be bringing several text amendments in the near future that you will see related to the land development process. So we've got -- we know we've got a lot of things in our code to address and clean up. And instead of one big swooping, you know, new code replaces the old code, it'll be through a series of text amendments. So but tonight's text amendment is on this slide here. You can see that Section 23-327, Paragraph B12, the Land Development Code, states that the blocks numbered consecutively -- there was another part of this sentence, but the blocks numbered consecutively throughout the entire subdivision, and the lots numbered consecutively throughout each block. So when you're plating a subdivision, the code makes you number the lots and blocks, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 consecutively. And the proposed text amendment is to add this underlined section here right in front of that sentence. So it would say, unless otherwise approved in writing by the Development Services Director, the blocks are numbered consecutively throughout the entire subdivision and the lots numbered consecutively. You might be asking, why would we even consider amending the code to do this? And the reasons are, sometimes we have development projects that are very complicated, very large, drawn out over many years, through many phases. They're involved in other development actions related to maybe TIF districts or TID districts or things of that nature. And so when those other development actions might take into account a different numbering or a different numbering of those lots, might be more beneficial for assisting those phases along. We would want to have that flexibility. So this would be in very rare circumstances that we have something this complicated, this large. But we, in fact, have something like that right now in our office. And so we are proposing this text amendment that we've reviewed this, and we feel like this is the best path forward to allow this flexibility. Like I said, this will be a minority. We'll always -- we're not going to allow residential subdivisions to come in here with some odd numbering system just because they want to. You know, that they want to number their lots after their birthdays or something like that. You know, it will still follow the process that has been followed, but in rare circumstances, we want to have that flexibility. Any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And I do have alternatives and recommendations.
Do I need to do the hearing just for the... Okay. I'll just go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if we have anyone to speak in favor. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone who wants to speak in opposition. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for findings and alternatives.
Okay. Actually, I didn't write out the findings in my presentation, but there's one listed in your report. So the alternatives are presented here to accept findings, recommend that the City Council approve the proposed text amendment as presented. Alternative two, find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a future Planning Commission meeting. Or three, find the text amendment is not needed and do not recommend that the City Council approve the text amendment, and staff is recommending alternative one.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion? Or perhaps a motion?
I'll motion to accept the findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed text amendment as presented.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. All right. Thank you. That concludes the public hearing section of our agenda this evening. We'll move down to meeting summaries for review and possible action. We have the regular meeting summary of December 17th. I would just ask if anyone would like to move to approve as submitted, or if there are any corrections or additions.
I'll move to accept the minutes as presented.
I have a motion to accept the meetings minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or the city attorney for discussion and possible action. The only item that we have listed is that the next regular meeting is March 4th. Seeing nothing from anyone else, last item on the agenda is to adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. We now stand adjourned.